The February meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission will come to order. I will call on Commissioner Hicks for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord God, we love you and we thank you for waking us up again today that we might attempt to get it right. We thank you for this great opportunity to serve your people and we ask a special blessing on the citizens of Suffolk and throughout this land. Lord, we ask that you would heal our country and give us all minds and spirits of unity. And we pray that you would continue to bless us through this pandemic and that you would continue to watch over our healthcare providers, our service employees, and all others who may be placed in the midst of this problem. We thank you, God, that you keep allowing them to go home safely each night to their loved ones. Bless our troops and give us a mind to press on for peace everywhere. Now be with us, God, as we deliberate today. Give us wisdom from one high. Keep us and we shall be kept; bless us and we shall be blessed. These and all other blessings we ask in your precious name. Jesus, amen.
Mr. Hanley, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Present.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Here.
Mr. Edwin?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Hertz?
Here.
Commissioner Rector?
Here.
Mr. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Staler?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all members of the commission, you do have a forum.
Thank you for that. All right, are there any corrections to the minutes of the January meeting? If not, those minutes will stand approved as presented. We have two public hearings this afternoon. Public hearings are 30 minutes in length. 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for opposition, five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. Public hearings are videotaped and made available for public viewing. Our first public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-026, Costas North Park. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Mark Furlough, Director of Parks and Recreation, on behalf of the City of Suffolk, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Orders, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a park slash open space generally on property located at 724 North Main Street, zoning map 34A, parcels 30, 31*31B, and 32. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-026. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. At this time, we will recognize Staff Planner, Ms. Baker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. CUP 2020-026 is a conditional use permit request to establish a park open space at 724 North Main Street. The property under consideration is located in the Central Growth Area Core Support Use District and is part of the Suffolk Voting Borough. The property is Zone B2, General Commercial District. The immediately surrounding properties are B2 and include commercial properties. To the south of the subject property, on the other side of the Nansaman River, there's a hotel zone, CBD, Central Business District, and the Constance Warf Park and Marina Zone C, Conservation Zoning District. Additionally, there are condominium zoned RU, Residential Urban, to the southeast of the property on the other side of the Nansaman River. The applicant is proposing a two-acre park on three parcels containing 25.9 acres. The entire 25.9 acres will be subject to the conditional use permit. The park will be accessed off North Main Street. The park will be developed in two phases. The first phase will include a living shoreline to replace the existing riprap that currently defines the steep armored river bank. The bank will be backfilled with sand and/or suitable native soil and densely planted with saltwater tolerant herbaceous vegetation. The upper high marsh will also be planted with live stakes and native shrubs. Established plant roots will reduce soil loss and erosion from the Nansaman River. The riparian zone will encompass the stormwater wet swale, consisting of 245 woody species. The wet swale will be installed down gradient of the proposed parking lot. Stormwater runoff from the parking lot will be directed to this wet swale best management practice via pavement grading and a cobble line ditch. Phase two of the park will include hardscaping improvements such as a 12-space paved parking area, seating, and multi-use trails. Additionally, phase two will include a plaza and an open lawn. The subject property is in the 100-year floodplain in the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area with RPA and IDA features present. Prior to site plan approval, an overall decreased impervious surface must be demonstrated in the RPA. Additionally, development area consists of broken asphalt and formerly impervious area that can count as credit toward the required 20% reduction in pollutant load for stormwater. Areas of impervious surface on the subject site must be identified. Among other necessary requirements, the identification of impervious surface on the subject property will be required prior to site plan approval. It is anticipated that the park will improve the existing environmental conditions on the property by planting native species, replacing compacted gravel and pavement with native soil, and creating habitat for shellfish. Staff finds that CUP 2020-026 fulfills the criteria of the UDO and recommends approval with conditions as noted in staff's report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now open the public hearing. Officer Jackson, is there anyone outside who would like to participate in our public hearings?
Not at this time, Chair.
Thank you. All right, who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Mark Furlough. I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation. I would like to mention, too, that this area is, for many of us who live in Suffolk, this area is very prone to flooding. That road typically will get shut down during a very heavy rainstorm. So while that property is prone to flooding, the flooding is infrequent, and flooding occurs less than 1% of the time and only during the most severe rainstorms. The park will be a refuge from the heavily commercial corridor of Suffolk usable for the vast majority of the year. When flooding does occur, the improved grading and landscaping will aid in the water moving off the property and filtering nutrients and improving the health of the river. Resiliency has become a buzzword in coastal Virginia. Resiliency is a major consideration for most development projects in the Hampton Roads area. All of the amenities and landscaping will be selected and constructed in a manner to withstand infrequent flooding, the infrequent flooding that occurs. The park will include picnic shelters or benches, walkways, parking. The amenities will showcase environmentally friendly design features, including native trees, vegetations, a rain garden, and shoreline restoration. And if you have to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Furlough. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, Mr. Furlough, would you like to make any additional comments? We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
I got a question for Mr. Furlough, please.
Yes, sir.
Didn't this site have some environmental issues back? I just vaguely remember seeing a picture, I believe it was from Isabel, with oil sheens kind of going into the water. I mean, and this would be...
Okay. That's the other side. That's from the other side of the street.
Other side of the street.
Other side of the street.
Okay, well, I just remember seeing an aerial shot and, you know, and again, it was all in the water at the time.
Yes.
We did conduct an environmental assessment on the property and we, the Department of Planning, has a copy of the environmental assessment.
Yeah. I'm just remembering the photograph. I know where the source of it was.
It was a couple of years ago that it came up in here, and like I said, I just recall seeing the photograph.
No major environmental issues were discovered during that environmental assessment that the city did.
Thank you.
Just a minute, Mr. Furlough. While Mr. Furlough is at the podium, are there any questions from any other commissioners to him?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Furlough, number one, I want to congratulate the city for finally doing something productive with this area. I've lived in the city for 34 years, and it's always amazed me that right there along the river, along the downtown area, you essentially had an ice over like that. So I'm very glad to see the Parks and Recreation doing something with the site. The improvements that you're going to make to the site, they're not going to mitigate the flooding at all, are they? So you still get a strong northeaster? It's going to still close down Main Street just on the other side of Kimberly there?
No, it would still, they anticipated it would still close down. It will help the water move off the property a little bit better because the grading, you won't have, ideally, you won't have standing pools of water after the water does recede. But we also, Public Works has a project in the works that is, its objective is to correct that flooding issue, and our design, our engineers have been in touch with Public Works, so they've coordinated the two projects so that the one doesn't impact the other negatively.
Does that include some kind of firm structure, or is this, are we going to have to go back and essentially rebuild that bank from time to time as strong storms come through?
So this is going to be a living shoreline, so they're put in to withstand, they're put in to withstand those types of storms, so we don't anticipate having to go back and do maintenance to that shoreline.
Thank you.
All right, again, while Mr. Furlough is at the podium, any other questions from commissioners?
I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. It was interesting to me that this particular thing was, we were a little bit familiar with it because it does show up in the capital improvement plan. And the question I had had to do with the budgeting and all that sort of thing, and I noticed that in the capital improvement plan, then in fiscal year '23, it was $45,000. And in fiscal year '24, it was $385,000, which I guess would encompass the phase two, phase one, phase two.
That would actually be for a phase three. Right now, we have funding to do phase one and two. Phase one is going to be the living shoreline, and phase two is everything you see, the parking lot and everything up from the shoreline. So the funding's in place to do phases one through two. We didn't include phase three because we don't have the funding in place to do phase three, so we didn't want to include that in the CUP at this point.
I just wanted to make the comment because sometimes things like this come up, and it's comforting that we have already been aware of this sort of thing coming up, particularly involving the city-owned property. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creekmore. Again, while Mr. Furlough is at the podium, any questions to Mr. Furlough from commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we've had the public hearing. We are back to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for the approval of conditional use permit 2020-026 with the conditions.
Second. Motion for approval from Commissioner Rector with conditions, and a second from, all right, Commissioner Staler. Motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Motions for approval. Mr. Hanley, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Mr. Edwin?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman passes eight to zero.
And will go to City Council on March 17 with a recommendation for approval. All right. Our next public hearing this afternoon is ordinance text amendment, OTA 2021-001. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this amendment was initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendment to this code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Orders, Article 7, Supplemental Use Regulations, Section 31, 724, Solar Energy Facilities. The purpose of this text amendments is to update and refine the code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31, Unified Development Orders, due to a change in circumstance. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment, OTA 2021-001. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. At this time, I recognize our planner, Mr. Gumas, for staff report.
Good afternoon. Presented for your favorable condition are amendments to the Supplemental Use Regulations for Solar Energy Facilities. Specifically, the amendments enhance and strengthen the requirements for buffer, vegetated buffers. In particular, the amendments widen the width of the buffer to 50 feet when the facility is adjacent to either a residential use or a zoning district. It requires that the buffer grow into an opaque condition within two years. It limits the number of deciduous trees utilized in the buffer to 25% and increases the size of the trees and vegetation at the time of planting. The amendments were prepared in response to recent experience that we've had with approved solar energy facilities and the community concerns that were expressed for better screening of these facilities. This is a public hearing, after which the director and I will be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application? No one who wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? There is no one who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition, we will close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Bob, or David, either one probably. Under the installation and design, it's under Section B, item number 6A, it says that, "In instances where existing natural vegetation and topography are insufficient to achieve continuous opaque screen, planted buffer shall be installed so that, within two years of planning..." And I guess my question there is, then it says that if it doesn't, or if it fails that, then the developer shall be required to install a fence with the green. Is this an either or, or?
No, sir. It's a failure to perform clause, is if the buffer that he plants does not meet that performance requirement, then he's got to put what is commonly known as tennis court screening up.
Okay.
Because the intent of this amendment, as Mr. Gumas said, is to address concerns from citizens that's been expressed to us after the solar ones have gone in, and they have not been properly buffered.
Theoretically, they could just not perform, and knowing they'd have to come back and put the screening in lieu of the planning. Is that what it says?
No, that's not the intent. I mean...
Yeah, I'm a little concerned that they might just say, we're going to put a fence up, chain link fence with the...
Well, they have to put the fence up anyway.
Okay.
And they do have to perform the application of installing the plant material as specified in here. So they have to maintain that, and then the next procedure would be, is if they failed to do that, our zoning administrator, who's in the audience, would pursue them for failure to perform and conform to the site plan requirements. And then if that fails, then we have the comeback at the end, after two years.
To do the green, heavy duty?
Yes.
Okay.
The installation of the buffer is still required. If they simply fail to meet the requirement that it be opaque within two years, then they can, the supplemental regulations require them to install the screening on the fence.
Theoretically, they could just do a halfway job, kind of like the one that's already out there on 460, and the requirement would be that they'd have to put the green stuff on the existing fencing to, and not go and put the vegetation back, correct?
No, they still need to maintain the vegetation. The vegetation is a requirement of the condition, and it'd be a requirement of the conditional use permit.
All right, just a minute, Mr. Gumas. Let's see if any other commissioners have any questions while you're at the podium. Mr. Staler, were you through with your questions?
I was thinking about that. Yeah.
I thought you were.
Yeah, somehow, just, it just seems like to me that we're giving them an out of replacing the vegetation, which is much more appealing to the eye than would be a fence with green mesh enclosed. And the reason I say that is there's one of these fields out in Holloway County, and I don't know that they did much with the vegetation, but they put the screening material in the fence, and first big windstorm came through there, there was no screening, it was flapping in the breeze, so I just don't know if that's really given the neighborhood adjacent the protection that maybe we should give them. Thank you, you answered my question.
Mean amendment. Are there other commissioners? I recognize Commissioner Singleton.
Mr. Gumas, do we have any recourse, the city, that is, with the one that Mrs. Staler mentioned out on 460? With this new ordinance, that conditional use permit has been approved and it's signed off on, but now that we have new guidelines, do we have any recourse to go back to that developer and require them to change or do improve?
We're working with that developer. Keep in mind that the general answer to your question is these regulations would not apply to their conditional use permit. Their conditional use permit is based on the existing regulations and the existing screening standards. That's not to say they don't have screening requirements. They're just located in another area for other industrial users. They're the same as all other industrial users. These are more stringent for these particular facilities than other industrial users. The recourse, though, that project is not complete either. It's still ongoing in the development stages, so they, you know, they will need to bring their landscaping up to standards that are required at that time. Further, if they fail to meet the requirements, then it becomes a zoning matter, and it could proceed to as far as the City Council revoking a conditional use permit if they, you know, continue not to adhere to the conditions of the approved conditional use permit. That's not our goal. Our objective is to have compliance, and they are currently working with staff to inventory and bring their existing plantings, or lack thereof, up to standards.
Turn to the commissioners. Are there any other commissioners who have a question to Mr. Gumas? I recognize Commissioner Creekmore.
Just to piggyback on Commissioner Staler's, if you're familiar, it's right over the line, you're talking about the one in Holloway County. There's a development at the end of Oliver Road in Longview, a solar farm that's been there probably three years now. Well, they put one of these fences up to begin with to screen everything so you couldn't see the collectors, and within six months, it was flapping in the breeze. I mean, there was just nothing there. Took them a while to get all the stuff taken care of out that way, and they have planted some trees, and that's about it, hedge, you know, around there, which is going to take years for these trees to grow up to the point where it would screen that area off. Now, again, not in our area, but these solar farms are pretty good size, that one in Holloway County is a pretty good-sized solar farm, and we were looking, I mean, the one on 460 is a good-sized farm. So I think, you know, if they can, if they will, if any developers down the road, you know, can comply with this, I think it would be fine. But this screening process that they have, you know, that's a temporary situation, based on what I have seen and probably what you all have seen, too. But that was the only comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Creekmore. Again, are there any other commissioners who have questions to Mr. Gumas while he's at the podium? Thank you. We've had the public hearing. We're back to the commissioners for questions, comments, or motion.
Yeah, I'm with approval of OTA 2021-001.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Hicks and a second from Commissioner Singleton. Discussion of the motion. Motion and second for approval. Mr. Hanley, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staler?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, eight to zero in favor.
Thank you for that, and this will go to City Council on March 17 with a recommendation for approval. That concludes public hearings this afternoon. I'm not aware of any old business. Under new business, we have two items, status report from the City Council meeting of January 20, and a status report of preliminary plat's approved. Mr. Hanley?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, City Council met on January 20 and considered four items sent forth from this body. The first item was the rezoning at Northgate Commerce Park in the front of the park, which was RZN 2020-007 conditional, that had conditions set forth by this body and was approved with those conditions set forth. The next one was a pair of items heard by this body and sent forth. The first was a rezoning request, RZN 2020-008, and a pair of conditional use requests was CUP 2020-019. They were for Peanut Crossing. They were to change the bedroom allocation around, but keep the cap on the number of units, and also allow the demolition of the one structure where the new structure would go. Those were all approved with the conditions set forth by this body. The next one was a conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-022, which was Joyful Care Children's Academy. This was out in the Bridge Road Shopping Center. It was also approved with the conditions set forth by this body. We did have a preliminary plat approved by staff. It is on Turlington Road. It consists of two parts of it, and it's right near where the railroad crossing is. There is 97 lots on the northern parcel, and then 22 additional lots on the southern portion of the site. It is on the eastern side of Turlington Road, heading from town. So that was approved by staff, and that would conclude my So that was approved by staff, and that would conclude my report.
All right, thank you for that. All right, as we move to the end of our agenda, commissioners' comments. Are there any comments from the commissioners this afternoon? Before we adjourn, Commissioner Singleton, do you have any motions for the committee ordinances? I didn't think so. Okay, just checking. All right, are there any other matters that should come before this body this afternoon? Thank you for your attendance and participation. We are now adjourned.